Okay.
Second department report, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask Assistant City Manager Andrew Surratt to come to the podium and present a request to modify the special event permit which Council approved a few weeks ago for the Sales Music Series.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is on page 162 of your agenda. Go to the green sheet on that. And so this is a request to modify the special event permit for the eight remaining sales on the Square Music Series concert evenings. And so to specifically include an area for malt beverage sales. And so the request is coming to you tonight because there is a statute that staff has been made aware of that is something that's being used more and more across North Carolina. And in 2009, and this is specifically North Carolina General Statute 18B 1114.5. It's a part of the ALE malt beverage section of the statutes, but it specifically talks about wineries and breweries that can apply for a special event permit that allows them to provide craft beverages to audiences at events when asked. And so in 2009, the General Assembly evidently worked through the discussion about this and added it to the statutes. And so it's different than the other ALE permits that are, we're familiar with, that we've used or that our nonprofits have used. This in particular is given straight to a wholesaler. So not a distributor, not a retailer, but a wholesaler, someone who's actually making the product. And so what they do is they obtain that permit. It's on file with ALE, and as they have events where they are participating, then they notify ALE that that event is taking place, and then ALE sends a response back and approval. And so in this case, Old Hickory Brewery is the only brewer in our local area that we are aware of that has this type of permit. And so the opportunity now exists for us to just partner, try this out. Eight Sales on the Square Music Series events left in the Spring Series. And use OHB as the vendor. The city is not receiving any dollars from OHB. They are selling it, so it's not a, there's not a contractual agreement for the, for that beer. But there's, there are just some rules that are required for OHB to be the server in this particular case, and that is to have a designated area, which is on page 164. 164. There's just a map of Union Square, and it'll show an outlined area. So just similar to Hickory, I, and some of the other events, there's a designated area. Obviously, the beer can't leave that area. OhHB is required to do all of the ALE requirements to check age and things like that. We've had that area roped off, and so people can come in and out of that area freely, but those who are having a beer from that vendor stay in that area. And so the authorization comes from that general statute. Cities like Morganton, Blonrock, and Wilmington use this a lot for their special events and bands that play in their downtowns. We have typically used the nonprofit route, and that's, we've had great success with that as well. But in this case, this is a way to have one less step for this particular set of music events and go ahead and offer that as a part of the event itself. So the hours are the same, 5:30 to 8 o'clock for the music, and there'll be HPD staff in that area. And so we just ask for approval for the modification to the site plan and the application, and also specifically for the agreement, which is at your desk, for the eight events. In the future, if there are other breweries that come to town, then there'll be an opportunity to open that up and rotate or do some sort of other agreement that allows us to use more than just one brewer. At this time, OHB is the one with this permit in our area. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, we've never derived any revenue off of alcohol sales.
No, absolutely not. No. Thank you.
And just to clarify, so the action is to amend the special event permit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement that Ms. Surratt has outlined with OHB, Old Hickory Brewery, providing the beer during those events through management.
Well, I make a motion to amend.
I'll say it.
Motion by right, second by act.
Yeah, I want to understand just a little bit on the, we have not, you know, it's not the city's business to try to collect revenue based on the amount of alcohol that might be sold by a vendor. However, it seems to me that some consideration ought to be given, without consideration, I mean financial consideration, for Old Hickory Brewery to use that space to sell their products on Union Square. And this contract merely relies upon the goodwill of Old Hickory Brewery, which I think Biden is terminating, even though he terminated it this week. But if we're going to do this, and then particularly if there's other brewers in the future, I just, I would think that the public space, we have rates, we have licenses agreements with other, within other public spaces to sell products. Was that any of that discussed?
Yeah.
And what was sort of, what was the take?
Well, the give and take was they're afraid they're going to lose money. I mean, they got to actually have staff out there and pay them. The events can be up and down in terms of attendance. We even heard this evening, and we know from our own experience that when the weather's bad, you're going to have low attendance, that they still got to be there and provide it. So the thought process was, okay, this is a window. It's a trial basis. As you said, either party can get out of it. And we felt like trying to figure out some kind of revenue sharing with just, probably, they would probably walk away from it because they don't know if they could even make any money yet. So that, in simple terms, in the course of about three conversations and trying to get this done quickly, so that you could actually provide it, you know, during the next eight weeks or 10 weeks of the events, that was our thinking.
The last time, the JCs were volunteers. They didn't have a lot of...
Right. They don't have any overhead.
They don't have much overhead. So they were almost sure that...
And, my, the JCs are still doing their events. So you basically are going to be having tandem events that will overlap a little bit in terms of their time, one of them being at the Sales on the Square, the other one being down in the parking lot across from City Hall. Different venues, different types of music. Again, going back to our presentation, what we saw in these other communities was lots of activity going on in the evening, lots of different things for different types of people for what they're interested in. But specifically, your point was to say, well, let's try this, because their concern was that they're not making any money.
Well, okay, well, then, I guess to play the devil's, if I may, not to be argumentative. First of all, let me say, I don't feel like we're under any rush to complete this, to hit this May 10th day tonight. Of course, we'll take a vote or whatever, but I don't feel necessarily rushed on it. But on the, with regards to, what if they are wildly successful? I mean, you think they will come to us and say, we would like, just say, I mean, and look, I want them to be. That's, it's not about not, it's kind of about, it's about sort of having control of the public space there in, for the benefit of the citizens, you know, charging, making some sort of, I don't even know that it has to be all that financially strong. I think there's something needs to be in there. It's just good public policy.
Mr. Lell, I appreciate your offer of an area of attitude. And I, hey, the city, we deserve to, to have some reemergent for our capital investment in other places. But I do think, in a case like this, we would be headed down a dangerous path. There will be people who will not be receptive to us facilitate selling beer anyway. And by making the motion, obviously, I believe this is good. Overall, a good thing for people to have.
Right.
But you could end up with allegations. Well, they're not real anxious to enforce the alcohol laws because the city's making money on it. I think it's getting into a dangerous area mixing the city's profit and alcohol. So I just think...
Yeah, well, I'm not suggesting revenue sharing. I'm suggesting a flat rate.
A flat rate, yeah.
Perhaps. And I don't know, does, yeah, do other cities need research in this, did they charge?
I didn't come across that.
Did you not come across, did you ask that question specifically?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
And I didn't read it either.
Okay. I just don't know.
You're suggesting that they pay rent just like the other, the three other spaces that pay the rent on Union Square. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm suggesting that they pay a licensing fee in order to sell their product on the public space. Then the public, I think it's pretty typical public policy is that means for folks to do that, for folks to do that. I don't know, and I don't know what that amount should be. It might be a hundred dollars, you know? A hundred dollars is not going to sink it or make it go anyway, but I think that there needs to be something there so that council can revisit it.
Well, this is just an experiment. This is just for the eight weeks, and see if it works on both sides and develop a policy. If it doesn't work on their side or it doesn't work on our side, then we can see what purpose to be adjusted and deployed for the next series.
And this isn't a special event, but Groucho's and Wine Shop and Josh's, who have outside venues on our space to sell alcohol and old food, they don't pay anything. They do pay after...
Or just a small fee to them for that.
Yeah, in fact, they rent that space, which would be consistent with what Councilman Lell's saying. You could set it up as a rental space to say it's going to cost X to do this.
Is this how we group it? We make this a technical?
Well, it's back to the issue that Ms. Surratt pointed out, that they're the only entity we could find that actually has the right ALE permit to be able to do this. So you can't, I mean, our understanding of law is you've got to partner someone that has that ALE license. So in terms of an exception, I don't think we have anybody else that fits in that category.
I mean, by way of example, we just, we just partnered with Hickory Music Factory, a not-for-profit, and leased them the, our parks and rent. In exchange for that, what we are getting in consideration is not financial consideration. They're giving music lessons to citizens of Hickory that could not otherwise afford. It's providing, you know, a service to the public. So I just think it's good public policy to have some, some give and take, any kind of agreement with, particularly with a for-profit for public. That's how I feel, and I have a question.
But the key would be to, the key would be, is, are we doing anything on a square foot basis or is it just a fee?
Well, to be honest with you, that's why we just steered away from it, because we couldn't quickly and in a timely manner come up with something that we could justify and felt made sense to you all. The opt-out, we felt like, okay, something's not going well on our side one way or the other, we can simply say, no, we're not doing it anymore, and that's it. And so part of the, part of the logic is, you know, how do you ask somebody to pay if you can pull a plug on them the very next day or no? So I don't disagree with the conversation going on, just sharing with you kind of how quickly we tried to bring this to you and why the urgency, just to meet the... Well, actually, requests, public requests, you know, it's, it's an awkward situation out there, specifically at the Wine Shop, because we literally have an officer saying, you can't leave this area. And so it has felt awkward, I think, to people, and I've heard that comment a number of times of, you know, you got this great venue going on, this music, and yet there's this sense of, you know, you can't consume alcohol around there, you got to stay right there at the Wine Shop. And so there was really a kind of a bit of a sense of, can you do something about that? Initially, we said, no, we don't think we can. We tried all kinds of different ways, had a number of meetings with Chief Atkins, et cetera, trying to figure out how do you do that? You don't want to open it up to anybody bringing a cooler and just turning it into a mess. And so this law was actually brought to our attention to say, you know, here's an avenue that other communities use. And so we tried to do it in a timely manner to get it in front of y'all so that it could be something that takes place, because the first event, of course, started last Friday.
And granted, the, again, Friday night, I went down there, the tenants was down, but the weather was not good.
Sure.
But I can remember last summer during these things, and there was huge crowds out there, and as you said, it was awkward that you had to stay right here, you couldn't, there was a bout, and people, there were just too many people in one little spot. And so this is just a...
Well, does it, is it striking anybody else that we, when you hear some of these issues come up? And I was actually contacted by somebody prior to this, I don't think anybody said, asking for details on this, because they sell alcohol in that area, and they're like, you know? So is it, would it be worth having some further conversation as opposed to just doing this to try to get it done, but to hit this May date? That's what I would suggest we do, to see, because I do think that consistency and quality of public policy, we're charging rent for the folks that are, you know, that have businesses down there to be able to use the space outside. We need to for, for the sales. It's just not, it doesn't, somehow doesn't seem consistent to me.
I'd also be interested in what impact it might have on our police personnel that are working at that.
Okay.
And urgency as they want to do it this Friday.
Well, I don't know so much today. We were just trying to get it so that it's a consistent thing. I mean, once you start offering the program, you want to have it something that people know what to expect. I mean, that's part of why you do it every Friday, so that you advertise and give them you can have it. Again, we were just trying to respond to comments that we were hearing to say, okay, let's figure out some...
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. It just needs some tweaking.
You have a wonderful venue, you're asking people to come down here, you said, but wait a minute, let's put a stop to your, it's just a way to kind of further their, what they expect to go to an outdoor event.
In response to your comment, what license would apply or what permit would apply in this situation?
It's, it's the ALE permit that's referenced in 18B.
I'm talking about the city with implementing.
I don't know, that's what I'm saying. We'd have to come up with something because we really don't have anything right now.
We don't. The license would be, yeah.
Do we not have it in place already, a permit or a license for events such as that?
Yeah, we do. Well, you're talking about an actual permit where we permit someone to sell alcohol on our...
Or your place.
Well, the closest that you can come goes back to the relationship you've had for years with the JCs, where they're using the space at no cost. They are paying for officers, off-duty officers, to be in that area. And then, of course, the profit that they make off of the sale of alcohol is part of their giving back to the community. I guess philosophically, that's why City Council never got into that, and Councilman Lell raises a valid question. Okay, well, this is different in that you have a for-profit entity selling alcohol out there as opposed to a nonprofit entity. I think from a staff standpoint, we kind of, you know, although it was a requirement of the statute and the ALE permit, we kind of like the fact that it's keeping with our concept of a craft beer. It's local, you know, it's not just Budweiser or Coors that, you know, you can buy it anywhere kind of thing. But again, that's just, that's almost more personal opinion and trying to project...
I'm not trying to, I'm not by any way trying to torpedo the deal, but I'm suggesting that for one night, a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, whatever it be, there needs to be some consideration. The folks that are able to use Union Square for seven nights a week for outdoor dining, and they're paying the city a little bit of rent on it, it just seems consistent.
I mean, I can honestly see all of Lell's point, but I wonder if we could just try, I mean, if they are making some money, you know, I don't know that that's going to be the case, but, you know, it is a craft beer, I guess, so let's try it. I'm a temporary...
Well, we don't have to commit, it can be changed in that. We can make what we make. I mean, I don't see that the vendor is going to have to spend a tremendous amount of money to hear up and close that.
No, like I said, once again, I don't, I don't feel the urgency. There might be some other urgency. I don't feel the urgency.
I have heard, I have heard people say that you would expect at these kind of events, now, this is not rock concerts.
I understand.
But you'd expect at this kind of event, if you want to have an adult member, that you can have their own roster and enjoy it. Now, that's, I've heard that. I, 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 I haven't been to one of these yet. I keep wanting to go, but I ain't coming. But I, and it is, I have, I have observed at the Wine Shop, and I don't know how they feel about this, but the Wine Shop, you do have a whole lot of people huddling around in this kind of, it's kind of funny when you turn the corner and you look, over there, fight.
It's like the old smoking section.
I don't know, I, as long as we, as long as we're not committing ourselves to something forever, I'm kind of okay.
Well, there's a motion in a second. I call the question.
No. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
No.
Yep, one aye.
No, two nays.
Two nays.
No, I'm, I just, I have some reservations about this. I, I've been sitting here listening to this discussion, and there's something I understand that is something about this is people paying for space on Union Square. And then, you know, we, we come along and enter into an agreement where this person would not be paying for anything. And I don't know what they pay. Could I have some answer about what people pay to use outdoors space on Union Square?
Ask your question.
We're just trying to clarify what the motion was and who said it.
Well, at this point, the motion has been carried for three, I believe, but we're still receptive. This still can be changed, and we're going to have a second reading next week, next time, right?
No.
No, we can't.
Actually, well, actually, right, what you've done is, you don't, it doesn't require a second reading on the, on the special or the event permit, and then authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement doesn't require a second reading either, but certainly you can if you like. You actually can, however you want.
Well, actually, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking what these other folks pay. What do they pay to have outdoor dining or the Groucho's, the Wine Shop?
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Of course, that's year-round. Except for Karen, do it during the...
I just, I just feel like we've got to treat everybody the same in the same space. That's my, that's two issues. I agree that, you know, it helps attract people, overall, everybody costs a benefit. I mean, I'm concerned about each person paying the same amount for the same type, same space. And I'm also having some concerns about the police department and the personnel that are provided, who pays for those personnel, and how many there are, and things along the public safety.
But, are the JCs paying for police personnel any of that?
No, they used to, they don't anymore. But this, remember, this is separate from the JCs.
Well, I know that...
Two different areas, two different approaches.
We're providing, the city's providing two officers at the city's expense for...
And...
Which is fine, I think we should have...
And we, you know, like, we provide fifteen or twenty officers for Brett's ride.
With the expansion of this, moving inside, I'm a little bit concerned with what that's going to create in the public safety realm. I agree with Mr. Lell. I mean, I think, I mean, we got to, I think if we're going to rent space on Union Square or anywhere, we need to do the same for everybody.
I would move that we ask staff to meet with the Old Hickory Brewery and record a memorandum, see if it's possible to come up with a number that's, that's palatable on a trial basis within the pay.
Start at seventeen.
Yeah, we don't have to call it rent, we can call it a licensing fee. It can be twenty-five dollars or something like that.
But I have the event for ten, right?
Well, I don't think we can get an agreement done by this week.
It has worked.
I just made a motion, right?
I'm going to be honest with you. Now, the public safety could have brought into this, I'm not comfortable with my vote. I'm comfortable with the dollars, I'm comfortable with, but with public safety, I'm, you know, I'm just not comfortable.
Well, I'm going to speak to that because I went down there Friday night, there were two police officers. And if we sat here for years and had these mobs of people and hundreds of teenagers on Union Square and were oblivious to what was going down, all down there, that we would be concerned about what went on there Friday night is just mind-boggling to me. I mean, it was a smaller crowd, it was a well-behaved crowd, there are no mobs of teenagers roaming around. It was, it's just a whole other ballgame.
Well, it's the, it's the unknown as far as I'm concerned. We don't, we don't know what this is going to generate. And if you had two officers, in the worst-case scenario, can't handle a situation like that.
What I'm saying is, if there's an issue of public safety, I think it just about has to be unanimous for me to, to vote to take on something new, because I don't want to take a chance that something is going to happen and we get back to, we get back to, well, that was brought up and you still voted this. So I'm going to make a motion.
I have a motion, let it fail.
How do I get back out of this? I don't...
I have a motion on the floor to ask staff to revisit, and there's, I'm waiting on a second.
So we're not going to do it this week, this Friday?
Well, my, my motion would have staff to go back and tweak based on the comments that we heard, and not, and present it at our next meeting. And that would be, that about is the sum of my motions.
What does that mean for the original motion, second hand vote that passed? Should vote? If there was a second on the motion, but there was no vote?
Yes, there was.
On the, on the first.
There was a fourth, three.
There was a fourth, three.
There's no second.
There's no second on my motion, so it's...
There's no second on his one.
Yeah, but I, but I want to rescind my vote. I'm not going to be counter, I'm not going to be counter to the vote for both parties that are involved in this. I'm just not going to do it. So how do we do it?
Well, technically, that's, that particular issue's not necessarily on the agenda now, so I think we can make a motion to reconsider, or a motion to consider another vote on the issue.
Well, do we have to go back and vote on that same issue, or do we have to just, do we have to re-vote on that issue and then vote on Mr. Lell's motion?
And this could be Lell's motion.
This does.
For the lack of a...
We're talking about rescinding your vote, that's what we're talking about.
It would be a motion to reconsider or a motion for a new vote on the matter.
I'd like to make a motion that we re-vote a motion.
I'll say it.
Ask your question. Does the Old Hickory Brewery pay anything outside their, do you need outside their space?
One factor to consider is they do have insurance considerations with serving in that area. I forgot to mention that. I don't know exactly what that dollar amount is, but the license lets them do it, they got to have insurance to cover that area because they're liable and responsible for it.
I think if I'm Josh's and I'm, I'm having to pay twenty, oh, pay some money, and Old Hickory Brewery does not have to pay money, but I'm being, I'm being slotted.
That part of it bothers me. I understand the craft beer, I get all of that, but you know what? That part of that is just really hard.
Was there a second on his one?
Yeah, I said on his one.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Well, it's restating your motion's to...
My motion is to rescind the previous vote.
So we have to go twice? So, so, I'm...
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
Well, the vote now is to rescind that previous vote.
No, it's to reconsider.
To reconsider the matter.
Okay, to reconsider the matter.
Yes.
Okay, and get information on cost and fairness. Just wait a second. Okay, I make a motion to reconsider that matter.
And I say it.
Starting back at 8:45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All opposed, no. Mrs. Patton, vote in no. Six to one. Okay. Ms. Lell?
I move, I move that we ask staff to, based on our comments tonight, to meet with the Old Hickory Brewery, both of the, in this case, the folks naming the agreement. And tighten, address the agreement, address the agreement on the comments.
Their concerns are space and what everybody else has to pay and public safety.
Does that motion include bringing it on for the next meeting to review or consider?
If, not necessarily, if it can be done, it'd be great, yeah, that'd be great.
Got a motion? Second, second, Mr. Yes? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Sorry about that, folks. Sorry about that.